Members. This is the last session for this afternoon's special FC Home Affairs. I want to welcome the Secretary for Home Affairs and his team. For members who wish to ask questions, please press the Request to Speak button. And if you want to follow up on the administration's replies, please cite the relevant reply serial numbers. So the Secretary, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The Home Affairs Bureau is responsible for quite a diversified policy portfolio, covering a total of seven heads of expenditure. Our priority areas with additional resources provided in a new financial year as follows. Signature Project Scheme. To enhance district administration, the administration has put forth the Signature Project Scheme and earmarked an allocation of $100 million for each district council to implement one or two SPS projects. The HAD has sought funding approval for the projects from the LECO to finance preliminary work of individual SPS projects. District councils may partner with relevant nonprofit-making organizations, business organizations, statutory bodies, or government departments to implement the SPS projects. District councils must monitor progress and evaluate the effectiveness of their SPS projects. HAD will closely monitor the implementation of SPS projects. Promotion of District Arts and Culture. An additional sum of $20.8 million per annum will be injected into the Community Involvement Fund, starting from 2013-14. This would strengthen the support for district councils to promote arts and culture in 18 districts. District councils may use additional funding with the advice from the LCSD to provide better planning and support for arts and culture activities at a district level. This will help arts and culture to further take root in local communities. The District Minor Works Programme is one measure in district administration. By the end of January 2013, more than 3,200 DMW projects have been completed in 18 districts. The DMW programme has not only improved the local environment, it has also provided job opportunities. We proposed, and FC approved, an increase of funding for the DMW programme from $320 million to $340 million in 2013-2014. The additional $20 million will be used to pay consultancy and resident staff fees centrally. As a result, district councillors will have more resources at their disposal to carry out works projects. Combating unlicensed guest houses. To ensure the safety of tourists and the public, the Office of the Licensing Authority of HAD has adopted a multi-pronged approach, including strengthening law enforcement action, enhancing deterrent effect, and stepping up publicity to combat and raid unlicensed guest houses. In 2012, the number of OLA's inspection prosecution instituted and convicted cases increased remarkably as compared with 2011. In 2013, the OLA will continue to spare no efforts to strengthen its enforcement action against unlicensed guest house activities, particularly those unlicensed guest houses holding out their premises through the internet. OLA will also launch a new and extensive publicity programme to appeal to tourists to patronize licensed guest houses.
Acquiring artworks of local artists. Secretary. I want to say that this session will end by five minutes past seven, and we have 14 members waiting to ask questions. In fact, your script, the script of your speech has been tabled. So I think I'll now answer members' questions, Chairman. Thank you. Now, with 14 members queuing up to ask questions, each member will be given four minutes. But of course, I'll have read other names. Ma Feng Kwok, Gary Fan, Christopher Chong, Priscilla Leung, Yip Kwok Him, Charles Peter Mock, Leng Chi Cheung, Che Kim Po Wong Kwok Hing, Wu Chi Wat, Kenneth Chan, Yu Si Wing Ma, Chong Lee Chee, Cheung Kwok Chu. Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. I want to ask a question about HAB071. Now, in fact, my question is very short. It only has three lines. Now, the 2013-14 estimate is higher than the 2012-2013 revised estimate by 32.9%. I want to know the details. And the reply is only slightly longer than my question. Four lines in total. So is it that my question is not clear enough? Or is it that the administration simply can't provide a detailed reply or explanation? Now, I discover that many of the replies provided by the administration in this present exercise are not detailed enough. But then this one is really quite outrageous. I really don't know how to follow up because basically, no reply is given. In one area, last year, $108 million, then increased by about $30 million to $143 million. And then arts administrators, $12 million, and about $2 million more than the previous year. Then what about the Asia Cultural Cooperation Forum? What is the expenditure? Has there been an increase in the operating expenses? So I really feel rather baffled. And then HAB073. In fact, I asked the CEDB this question, but then I was told by the CEDB that part of the question should be answered by the HAB. So I would like to know more about the supportive measures for cultural and creative industries. And I want to know whether the two bureaus act independently on this matter or whether there is coordination between the two bureaus. Permanent Secretary? Permanent Secretary, please.
Yes, Chairman. Now, concerning question number 71, I want to say that the scope is very wide, and that's why we've given members an overall reply. I can read out a detailed reply now, but I don't think members have enough time. You only have 1 minute 20 seconds. Now, concerning the change in funding between 2013-2014 when compared with 2012-2013, now we have seven heads of expenditure. I don't think they can give you, they can really give a reply. So you spent two minutes on your question, and they don't have enough time for a reply. Permanent Secretary, I just want to highlight areas where the increase in expenditure is substantial. Now, we have seven heads of expenditure. I don't want to have our time wasted. Now, for the first question, please give the information in writing. Please answer my second question. Now, concerning whether there is coordination and communication between us and the CEDB on supportive measures for the cultural and creative industries, the answer is yes. In fact, we are keen to provide support for the cultural and creative industries. Mr. Gary Fan. The question is HAB217. We are told that the Director of Environmental Protection is now considering the application for an environmental permit for the development of a bathing beach at Long Mai. I want to know when the application or the handling of the application will be completed. Then it is said that there will be translocation of three fish species of conservation importance. So when will this be done? And then thirdly, now as the Director of Environmental Protection is still considering the petition to cancel the EP for the project, why is it that the government is considering how to carry out the translocation of the three fish species? Why is it that you are not waiting till the DEP has made a decision? Secretary. Now, we are still awaiting a decision from the DEP with regard to a petition to cancel the EP for the project. Now, in fact, we've started a tendering or started to invite tenders, but then tenders have not been awarded yet. And when the works start, the contract will include the translocation of the fish species. Mr. Fan, I think only one of the three questions has been answered. So how long is it going to take the DEP to come to a decision? Do you know of that, Secretary? I think it's a matter for the DEP to decide. I can't really set a timetable on behalf of the DEP. Can you after the meeting write to the EPD and try to get a reply for Mr. Fan? Yes. And then the other questions, they have been answered already. I have no follow-up questions. Mr. Chong Shukam, I want to follow up on HAB15A, Chairman. It is said that the Legal Aid Department will be finalizing the declarations. So a lot of information will have to be declared. And then how are you going to monitor the operation of the system? Will you carry out sample checks? Or will you only act on complaint? And then if you discover false declarations by applicants or by lawyers, then will the lawyers and the applicants be punished? If so, how? What are the penalties?
Yes, Director. Thank you, Chairman. At the end of last year, we consulted the Legal Aid Services Council on the declaration requirements. And upon the request of the LASC, we wrote to the two legal professional bodies to seek their views. On Monday, the Law Society gave us its comments, and we are still awaiting a reply from the Bar Association. After we've received the reply, we will study the feedback, and then we will submit those views and our response to the LASC. So I think this is really not the right time to talk about the details of the declaration system. I want to say that the purpose of the declaration system is to make sure that when an applicant tries to get a lawyer to assist him, his choice will not be affected by improper behaviour on the part of some people. And then what about sample checks? Carrying a random check, I mean? So we have to rely on information provided by the applicant and the lawyer. And if there is no evidence that false information has been provided, then it's rather difficult for us to carry out random checks. But of course, if we have doubts, then we will carry out investigation. And if a lawyer willfully and deliberately makes a false declaration, we will consider delisting him from the Legal Aid list.
Yes, Mr. Chong, I wish to follow up on HAB170, the Value Partnership Scheme. Though we are told that some groups or companies are not performing well. So for these underperforming groups or companies, will you allow others to make use of the venues?
Dr. Priscilla Leung, I'd like to follow up on Reply 133. Secretary, in Shamshui Pole, we can see the usage rates. There are many community halls. In reality, for the whole of Shamshui Pole, they've been queuing up for a long time for a community hall that can house 1,000 people. When kindergartens and primary schools have their speech days, they have to go to Ngao Chi Wan and Ngao Tao Kok. It's because their own community hall is small. So I very much hope that in Shamshui Pole, in fact, I've told the secretary for many years that I'd like to see a project that can see a breakthrough to provide Shamshui Pole with a 1,000-person community hall so that the elderly and children, et cetera, do not need to go too far. And then I'd like to follow up on Reply 155, which is about legal aid. I'd like to understand one point. In terms of legal aid, can we also have a breakthrough? Recently, I assisted a Hong Kong resident who was almost sentenced to 11 years of imprisonment. His wife could not employ a lawyer. Fortunately, eventually, somebody was willing to help, free of charge, and he was released. I personally assisted a few of these people. They're in misery, the whole family did not have money. So in terms of legal aid for Hong Kong permanent residents, if they encounter difficulties in terms of cross-boundary disputes, what assistance can be lent to them? Dr. Leung, would you please do not use both English and Chinese together in your questions? We have officials here. "Mr. Chairman, I did not use English." Well, you used to aim at. So I did not try to do nitpicking, but I have to be fair. You have to be fair. Well, yesterday and the day before yesterday, no colleagues used Chinglish. And today, both officials and colleagues have been using Chinglish. So do not use both English and Chinese in your remarks. So you have to give me back the time. Yes, I'll do so. Secretary. Legal aid concepts as well as the Legal Aid Ordinance aim at supporting Hong Kong's legal system to assist those with financial difficulties. Anybody who has financial difficulty will not be prejudiced in front of judicial justice. At the moment, we have no intention to extend our legal aid services to the mainland which has a different legal system than from ours. As for Shamshui Pole, we know that there is such a local demand in handling basic facilities, including basic local facilities, will adhere to the established procedures. Dr. Priscilla Leung, Mr. Chairman, the secretary did not answer my question. I'm asking about basic procedures. Does he have a direction to give hope to Shamshui Pole residents that they'll get a 1,000-person community hall? They've been queuing up for many years among the 18 districts. I understand that they're now nearing the top of the list. Any hope? Secretary. "Mr. Chairman, hope always exists. There's always hope in this world." Well, I always say that their department always leave people round and round without arriving anywhere. So go back to the department and the district officers. Mr. Yip Kwok Him, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking about Reply 110 about district administration. Well, all along, we've been asking about district councils. The CE said that district issues should be resolved at the district level. $100 million will be given to each district council for their work. So the pressure on district councils is growing. Now, in my question, I ask, under such a circumstance, how can you perfect your assistance, in particular in terms of secretariat service? And now we have a piece of legislation in the LECO about the abolition of appointed seats. So public opinion will be given more significance in future. Now, in the secretary's reply, the manpower level mentioned is very much different from what's asked by councillors. In particular, if you want, if we want an independent secretariat for each district council, it's impossible. Well, given the number of civil servants, it will be impossible to provide an independent secretariat for each district council. So the possibility is low. But you must make sure that district council secretariats have sufficient manpower. It is impossible, given the present manpower level. With the administration hugely enhanced its support for district council secretariats, you must give them a great deal more resources before they can cope with future workload. Have you ever considered that in your reply? Nothing is mentioned about that. And really, resources are really too scarce. Secretary? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, in terms of resource allocation, we've been striving very hard for more resources. So we'll strive for more resources for district councils. Are you saying that you tried but failed? Well, we attach importance to our relationship with the district councils, and we support their work. Secretary? Well, can you pass some of the resources in your envelope to them concerning the use of resources? Under the envelope concept, we'll try as far as possible to strive for more for them, and we'll give more to district administration as far as we can. However, manpower is not something that we can deploy internally. You know that in the civil service, we'll have to go through procedures, certain procedures to create posts, and eventually, we need the approval of the LECO. If, like the honourable member said, we are to increase the resources hugely, then we'll have to come back to LECO. Well, the Pan-Democrats as well as we have the same request because at the present manpower level, it is impossible to cope with the upcoming district council workload. And somebody has been asking whether or not resources for appointed seats can be channeled for this new purpose. Mr. Charles Mock? I'd like to follow up on Reply 149. We would like to know how the SARG will use the internet to collect information, particulars of individuals, social networking, et cetera. So I asked about Facebook, blog, YouTube. Well, no Chinese for this, et cetera. And then for every item, they say that the Information Services Department does not have the information about other departments. And I asked about the last term of the SARG, which hugely promoted the use of Facebook. However, apparently, the webpage has already been dropped. Should you reinstate that to communicate with young people? And again, the reply is that they do not possess the information. Therefore, the ISD is not in a position to answer questions related to the CE's office. Well, if the ISD does not have the information, they cannot answer my questions. If I understand correctly, I did not ask the ISD these questions. I don't know why my questions were passed to them. And now they're unable to answer my questions. Should somebody else be responsible for answering these questions? Is it the administration weighing that should be collecting all these information? Did I make a mistake? What had happened? Because they're saying that they do not possess the information for any of the items. Can I request that the bureau, that is the Home Affairs Bureau, or the, or and the ISD, to refer these questions to relevant departments? To ask them to relay these questions to the relevant departments in order to obtain the information? I believe, I'm not talking about secret information. We just want to know what's happening. However, for all of my questions, they're saying that they don't have the information. ISD, you don't have the information, or he fetched the wrong department? No, it's not I who fetched them. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Mock for his questions. Under Head 74, we provided a detailed reply for questions related to the ISD. At the moment, we don't have a central database on these issues. I wonder if Mr. Mock's questions can be referred to relevant departments. However, members, what officers, sometimes write to all government departments. Anyway, we'll follow up on this. Well, Mr. Chairman, I understand that this is not really a question for the ISD. Sometimes, when we ask questions, a number of bureaus and departments are involved. However, we cannot allow one question to be separated into 30 odd questions. Perhaps my question was distributed to wrong departments. In future, if they see that there's a wrong categorization, they should refer the question concerned to the relevant bureau or department. Mr. Leng Chi Che. I'd like to ask about Reply 119. On ethnic minorities, resource problems have emerged. In the past, they got $27 million. Recently, when I contacted the ethnic minorities, in particular the Pakistanis, I learnt that they are badly in need of venues in particular. Is there any government policy to allow these ethnic minorities to worship their gods? Can they have something like the community halls? Or is there any government venue for them for that sort of service? Secretary? Well, at the district level, there's really such a demand. The South Asians, the ethnic minorities do have a need for venues for religious services. Well, we'll look into that. We all know that there are difficulties in identifying venues. Whether or not certain time slots can be allocated to them in the community hall, we're looking to that. For example, the Islamic Church, their members need to pray several times every day. So how should we arrange a venue for them? There's a bit of complication in that. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask about Reply 56. For football, the administration has actively supported it. This year, $20 million have been earmarked for the Phoenix project, and then another $60 million for monitoring the progress. Well, I think the direction is correct. But for this Phoenix project, Phoenix, after reading the paper...
I identify some difficulties because it proposes to fully reform the Hong Kong Football Association.
So it's not just another new project. So can I ask the secretary whether you're confident that you'll be able to change the HKFA fundamentally through Project Phoenix, Permanent Secretary? Now, the project was launched about a year ago. And I believe we will see the effects only a few years later. But in the past year, we provided resources for the HKFA to form a new team to carry out long-term planning for Hong Kong's football development. The new CEO, the new coach for the national team have been in office. And we are satisfied with their performance. The LCSD has also provided suitable venues to support the work of the HKFA. And we've also allocated resources for the development of football at a district level. And so we should be able to see some concrete results in the next two to three years. I wish to follow up. Mr. Chan Keen Paul, reply 010. Chairman, it is proposed that one hundred and fifty million dollars be injected into the CCF to help the N have nots to implement programs that are proven effective but have not been incorporated into the government's regular systems and so on and so forth. So there are three purposes. Can I ask whether programs which have been proven effective through the CCF can be turned into regular programs? So that there will be long-term commitment to help the poor? And then concerning donations in the past three years, altogether in the past three years, altogether one point one billion dollars only, three hundred million, four hundred and seventy-eight million, and four hundred and ten million for the past three years respectively. So will you set up publicity? Will you still continue to ask the business sector to give donations to the fund, or have you given up? And then I wish to follow up on reply 123, raised by Miss Priscilla Lo on the establishment of OCs. In fact, I have recently taken part in such work. Now, I understand that the administration wants to encourage owners to set up OCs. Now, I understand that the intention is good, and the OCs are especially useful for single blocks. But then there may be problems when we come to the larger housing estates. Now, when you encourage people to set up OCs, you keep emphasizing the advantages of having OCs. But then what about the liabilities of the OCs? What about the liabilities of the owners, who are office bearers of the OCs? Now, some of these office bearers, in fact, have not expected that they will, they will have to shoulder so much liability. And also sometimes, after OCs have been set up, more disputes arise. So I think liaison officers should also explain the risks concerned to owners in encouraging them to set up OCs. In fact, they've heard replies like, "We only try to promote the establishment of OCs." I think concerning the CCF, Ms. Fu can give a reply. And then the establishment of OCs and whether owners are aware of their liabilities and the risks that they may shoulder, we will accept the members' advice. And that is, when our colleagues encourage owners to set up OCs, they should explain to owners clearly the advantages as well as the liabilities and responsibilities. Then for the larger housing estates, you know, there is some multiple undivided ownership or shares of ownership. So one problem is whether an OC can really be set up. Yes, Ms. Fu? Thank you.
Chairman? Now, for the CCF, we embark on early and pilot implementation. And if the projects are proven effective, then we can suggest that they be regularized. And then for projects which are still not regular programs but then have been proven effective, they can still be funded by the CCF. And I will very quickly cover the rest of the question. No, no, time's up. Please give the information and write it. Mr. Wong Kwok Hee? Chairman, I've got two questions. The first one relates to the secretary's speech, the last part on sports facilities. The secretary said that he knew that there was a shortage of sports venues in Hong Kong. So my question for the secretary is this. In the last term of the Legco, in the Home Affairs Panel, we asked questions about private clubs. Many of these private clubs are in the urban areas, some are in the rural areas. And they are located on very precious and quality sites. And they also operate pitches, sports grounds. So I want to ask the administration what the stand, or what follow-up action is taken with regard to these clubs. And then Mr. Ip and some other members have asked questions about the staffing arrangements in district offices. They are of the view that the manpower establishment is not enough. Will you consider employing more liaison officers for district offices? In fact, at the moment, liaison officers do have a very heavy workload. So we increase the number of liaison officers at district offices. Thank you. Secretary?
Chairman? Concerning clubs operating on private recreation leases, there are about seventy-odd such clubs in Hong Kong. And for about fifty of them, the leases will expire soon. And we are now dealing with their applications for renewal of lease. And when we deal with the applications, we will emphasize the need for these clubs to open up their venues. In fact, some of these clubs have had their leases renewed and they have, upon our advice, increased substantially the number of slots available to members of the public at large. And then, increasing the manpower establishment at district offices, we do attach great importance to members' suggestion. And the bureau and the department will very proactively consider the suggestion. Yes, I thank the secretary for his replies to my two questions, Chairman. Can the secretary provide detailed information to the Home Affairs Panel later on the fifty-odd private recreation leases which have been renewed or are about to be renewed? Because we want to know what the HAB has done. We want the public to know how they can make use of the venues, how they can apply to make use of such venues. I think it's important that there is greater transparency. Yes, Chairman, we will give members some more information in the Home Affairs Panel. Yes, I thank the secretary for this undertaking. And we look forward to receiving a paper from the secretary to the Home Affairs Panel. Mr. Wu Chi Wei?
Thank you, Chairman. In fact, many members are concerned about building management. And they've raised questions concerning the amount of manpower resources provided. Now, the secretary keeps saying that he is concerned. But when are you going to translate your concern into a paper on ways to improve the staffing situation? That's the first question. Second, and may I refer to question 140. In the past five years, there was almost zero increase in the number of liaison officers. And the number of liaison officers responsible for building management has increased from one-one-oh to one-two-oh. And maybe a few of them were responsible for monitoring the contracting-out project. Now, in the past five years, we had many new buildings and many OCs were set up. And how can you convince us that the present establishment of LOs can cope with the department's building management work?
Yes, I understand that many Legco members have expressed strong views about this matter. And I do attach importance to members' suggestion. And I will be reflecting members' concerns to the highest level in government. As members are aware, now if the government wants to increase expenditure in a particular area, if it wants to increase resources and staff establishment, there are some prescribed procedures to go through. Mr. Wu? But then, what is your position concerning the present establishment? Now, I believe you are of the view that some of the work can be contracted out and you seem to believe that that will solve the problem. And then according to your reply to me, out of the four hundred and twenty-two liaison officers, many of them are not involved in building management work. So can you deploy more LOs to the building management portfolio? And then, although these liaison officers are very experienced officers, they can't concentrate their efforts and attention on building and management. And I think you do understand that building management involves a lot of legal expertise. According to your reply, most LOs have served for thirteen years, but then they may only have six to seven years' experience in building management. In other words, they may be transferred from one poster and others say after three years. So would that affect the quality of building management work provided by the HAD? Chairman, I want to tell Mr. Wu and other members that I really appreciate your concerns about the staffing establishment at a district level. And I agree with members that we should increase the number of LOs at a district level. And then concerning the deployment of LOs, their postings, I understand that the HAD is constantly looking at how best to deploy LOs at a district level. And we do understand that, in fact, there is a lot of work to do at a district level. Mr. Kenneth Chan?
HAB 008, Chairman, the review of the Chinese temples ordinance. I'm glad to know that the review is near completion and the ordinance will be amended. So I want to know what you mean by nearing completion? And when will there be legislative amendments to the ordinance? Now, this is an obsolete piece of legislation that was enacted in nineteen twenty-eight. Now, you're the chairman of the Chinese Temples Committee. So can you tell us what you're going to do in the coming year with regard to amending the ordinance?
Secretary Chairman? We've already got the basic ideas on how to amend the ordinance. So we'll have to proceed to the stage of drafting the amendments. And we hope that we can table the amendments in Legco in the next session. So is it that the bill will be tabled in Legco in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen?
We hope that soonest by the first half of next year, we'll be able to introduce a bill to the Legco. Well, you have not included that in this year's legislative calendar, so it's impossible to have it this year. As for Chinese temples, can I further follow up on them? Now, why I'm raising this? Because for many years, in the Civil Civic Party, ever since the era of Mr. Tan Yeh Chan, we asked about illegal columbaria. And all along, the Legco has received complaints about the management of such facilities. Will your review cover these areas? And will the amendment bill cover these areas? We're talking about three hundred-odd temples, if I understand correctly, and they're registered under the ordinance, right? Secretary? Mr. Chairman, we review the ordinance mainly from the angle of religion. That is, we'll review the Chinese temples. As regards columbaria and their management, we'll have separate policies and laws to manage them. Mr. Kenneth Chan? Well, in the past, when the bureau answered members' questions, the secretary repeatedly mentioned the religious viewpoint. In their past replies, they say that because of religious concerns, it's very difficult to handle management problems, donations, and so forth. So for this internal review, how will they understand these management-related problems? Secretary? As for the formal content of the amendment bill, you'll have to give me some time before I can say anything. But I can tell Mr. Chan that there are two types of temples. One under the Chinese Temples Committee. Another, of course, the Chinese Temples Committee is responsible for effectively managing those Chinese temples under their jurisdiction to make sure that they satisfy the statutory requirements. The Basic Law safeguards freedom of religion. There are temples beyond the jurisdiction of the Chinese Temples Committee. So how are we going to manage them? And we have to be very careful in handling such issues as offerings. Thank you. Mr. Yu Si Wen? I'm talking, I'm asking about reply 103, that is about the CCF. Part of it is from the business sector, part from the government. Well, the government says that it welcomes all donations from the public. And no fundraising has been done amongst the business sector. Does it mean that the government is not confident that it can raise funds within the business sector? And will, future, will it do so? And then I'd like to ask about reply 118. The number of inspections on unlicensed guesthouses has doubled. However, the illegal practices and irregularities have diversified, so to speak, in nature. Does the government have any solution for the problems? Can you enhance punishment? Can you restrict the advertising of unlawful guesthouses on the internet? I'll defer to Ms. Fu for the CCF. As for the inspection of unlicensed guesthouses, we've already adopted a multi-pronged approach which has proved to be effective. What about internet publicity? Our licensing colleagues continuously monitor publicity and promotion on the internet of these unlawful guesthouses. If we detect any online advertisements, we'll issue online messages to sound a warning that such guesthouses are unlawful. And then our staff will inspect the premises concerned and enforce the law. Under the ordinance, the penalty is not light. But in the past, when judges passed judgment, they did not reach the maximum of the penalty system. Ms. Fu, well, the C C F is not a matching grant. As we say in our reply, at present, we don't have any intention to take the initiative to appeal for donations. But we appeal to all sectors of the community for donations. No matter how big or small the sum of donation is, we have to make sure that the project is operating well to benefit those who are in need. Mr. Yu Si Wang, I hope that the government will not close the door altogether for the C C F. The government should not say that since it is rich, it can close the door and do nothing. Well, after all, it's good to solicit assistance from the business sector rather than closing the door. In future, if you want to reach them, they may not heed your request. So should the government communicate more with the business sector to ask for more support for the C C F? As for penalty, yes, we have a penalty regime. But, excuse me for saying this, these unlicensed guesthouses treat penalty as tax only. So we should review the law to see whether there are loopholes. Secretary? Mr. Chairman, it's for the court to hand down the penalty. Well, the honourable member said that the illegal guesthouses treat the fines as trivial issues. But in terms of, say, property mortgage with banks, et cetera, we have a whole list of follow-up action. Mr. Tony there? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I follow up on my question, I'd like to ask something about page two, paragraph five of the secretary's opening speech. He said then that he would combat unlicensed guesthouses. We'll have to make sure at the same time that there are formal and licensed guesthouses for our visitors. Earlier, some landlords have made use of the market conditions to subdivide their flats and then sell the subdivided flats. Will the secretary review the statutory requirements so that those who possess hotels at the moment cannot make use of legal loopholes to sell the stories of their hotels? And if a purchaser purchases a hotel, how can the government prohibit them from selling the hotel eventually? Secretary, earlier, we had an incident in which a hotel was sold. And our licensing colleagues inspected the hotel, but discovered that the building was still used as a hotel. So we'll closely monitor the situation. So, Secretary, would you please follow up on that case? Such that individual purchasers will have less opportunities of using the legal loopholes. Now, I'd like to ask about reply ninety-five about youth hostels. In the reply, it is said that there are measures to guard against abuse. Now, I'd like to follow up on one aspect concerning the NGOs that run youth hostels. Will the government review these institutions to see, well, to review their capacity, for example, and competency to see whether they satisfy basic requirements? Besides, in terms of abuse, apart from relying on the land grant or the lease, what other solutions can there be to tackle the abuse issue? Secretary? At the moment, we are seriously looking into the issue. At present, there are two NGOs that major in youth hostels. And these two NGOs have the ability to run the youth hostels well. Now, we are studying how we can make the terms of land leases clearer. In future, if any NGO possesses sites that can be used for the development of youth hostels, we're willing to discuss with them. If public money is involved in the renovation or redevelopment of the site, then we'll pay attention to the site. Mr. Chang Kwok Chi? Mr. Chairman, I'm asking about reply zero one five on behalf of Dr. Fernando Cheung. That's about the use of the C C F. Item twelve, subsidy for non-school attending ethnic minorities and new arrivals from the mainland to enroll in language courses. About thirty thousand dollars were used, seventy thousand dollars on administration. And then, fifteen elderly dental assistance program, five hundred and ten thousand dollars spent, and one point one four million on administrative fees. And then, number sixteen, subsidy for owners' corporations for old buildings, a hundred and forty thousand dollars were spent, but four hundred and eighty thousand dollars were used for administrative costs. And then, for item eighteen, provision of special subsidy to persons with severe physical disabilities for renting respiratory support medical equipment. Now, this item is very interesting. Zero plus zero, that is, no spending at all. So why, for the first few projects, the administrative fees exceeded the actual expenditure? Deputy Permanent Secretary? Well, it depends on the case concerned. If preparation work is needed, then some preparation cost have to be given to the NGO concerned, while applicants are already there. Well, when the number of beneficiaries increases, like the dental project, you discover that the money would go to the beneficiaries. As for individual items, like the one for serving the ethnic minorities, it is one of the H A D projects. And the cause of carrying out that project, they did report to the C C F. And there's another special policy task force that discussed that project. If we identify room for improvement, we'll follow up with the relevant bureaus and departments. So that's my answer for your first question. Your second question is about item eighteen. Item eighteen, well, I think it has just started. So as the project proceeds, we've agreed that we'll look into the number of beneficiaries, costs, and so forth. All these information will be regularly uploaded to our webpage and reviewed by a special committee under the C C F. So what you mean is that the administrative cost should not exceed the money passed to the beneficiaries, but they just started. Yes, for the C C F, there's a basic principle that administrative cost should not exceed five percent of the overall cost of a project. Five percent, all right? Not exceeding five percent. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking this on behalf of Dr. Fernando Cheung. I'd like to remind the administration something about item sixteen. I understand that item twelve may be dropped. I suggest that more publicity should be done for project sixteen because there's a huge discrepancy at the moment.
Mr. Long Yu Chong? Thank you. I wish to follow up on a question raised by Mr. Xin Chong Kai. And that's H A B zero eight six, civic education and national education. Now, concerning the CPC E's funding for promoting national education, why is it that the funding will be increased by thirty-four percent from, to about eight point four million dollars? Is it that the CPC E Committee on the Promotion of Civic Education should concentrate its work on civic education? Why is it that it's going to promote national education as well? And why is it that the CPC E will get so much increase in funding? And then, concerning civic education, about twenty million dollars will be allocated for, to, for outside schools. But then, national education, twenty-six million dollars. So why is it that you need extra expenditure to promote national education outside schools? Is it that because of what happened last year, you're not able to promote national education in the school curriculum? And as a result, you're going to step up the promotion under the civic education heading and also outside schools? I can't see where, where there is this percentage of over thirty percent. This is H A B zero eight six, a question raised by Mr. Xin Chong Kai for the CPC E. Last year, six point four million dollars. And then, next year, eight point six million dollars. So there is a difference of two point two million dollars. Two point two million dollars extra. In other words, one-third extra. And your calculations are very quick. This is because I'm in the catering industry. Ms. Fu? Ms. Fu, please.
It depends on what activities and projects there are in the year in question. In fact, we do produce publications for young people. And in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we expect the expenditure to increase. And then, concerning the increase of about two million dollars, we have shown hands with the R T H K to produce a program. And the expenditure will be incurred in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. In fact, this is the fourth time that we are collaborating with the R T H K. And the program will be broadcast in, at the end of twenty thirteen. And as a result, the expenditure will be incurred in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen financial year. But then, in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, it was nine point four million dollars. So why was the amount smaller in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen? Chairman? I think, as the name suggests, the CPC E is responsible and should be responsible for promoting civic education. And I can't understand why this CPC has to take on the responsibility of promoting national education as well. And then, concerning promoting national education outside schools again, there will be an increase in funding. And it seems that the CPC E, or rather, the money allocated for the promotion of national education outside schools is quite substantial. Now, in fact, CPC E has all along been promoting national education as well. So it is not true to say that because of what happened last year, we have to stealthily do this and do that. In fact, I think there's nothing to hide when it comes to the promotion of national education. Ms. Helena Wong? I also want to ask a follow-up question on H A B zero eight six. What a coincidence. Now, Long Yu Chong asked about the figures. I want to ask about the qualitative aspect. So, Ms. Wong, can you please refrain from speaking in cocktail language? All right, I'll ask a question about part D of the reply. It says, H A B works closely with youth organizations, youth uniformed groups, and others coordinate youth development measures. So we've got in the annex a list of uniformed groups and other organizations invented by Home Affairs Bureau. So we've got thirteen organizations on the list. Is this the full list? Has any organization been omitted? Then, second, you're saying that we, it says here, we do not maintain a list of youth organizations. I cannot understand why this is the case. Because in D, you say at the beginning that H A B works closely with youth organizations, youth uniformed groups, and others to coordinate youth development measures. And if you do not even have a list of youth organizations, how can you work closely with them? Is it that you really don't have such a list? Or is it that you have such a list, but you do not want to show us the list? And then, E, we want to know what the assessment criteria are. And you're telling us that these organizations are required to submit reports. So I believe you've received the reports. So it said that there is no youth organization among these sponsored organizations. Secretary? Now, when we provide funding for organizations to promote or carry out activities to promote national education and civic education, now, in fact, the lists are available on the website of the CPC and the Youth Commission. So, in, so in other words, there is a list. Why is it that you're saying that we do not maintain a list of youth organizations? Permanent Secretary? Now, here, we're saying we do not maintain a list of youth organizations. But, in fact, for organizations which have received funding from the CPC E or the Commission on Youth, this is open information. So where can we get the information? The CPC E's website and the COY's app site. So you've provided a list of uniformed groups and other organizations invented by Home Affairs Bureau. Why is it that you're not able to provide a list of youth organizations which the H A B works closely with? Because many members are of the view that there should be more transparency, there should be more monitoring by the public. So why is it that you can't provide us with a list? Is it that you want us to try to drop a list ourselves? Now, there is no problem of transparency. In fact, the information is open information. But if Ms. Wong wants the information, I have to use some time to gather the information. So you can provide the information to Ms. Wong in writing, right? Now, considering these youth organizations, we want to know whether, in deciding whether to provide funding to them, you take into account their political background. And then, I understand that you've provided funding to Young D A B and some leftist organizations. And also the National Education Center, which is at the core of a controversy. So why is it that you are telling us that you do not maintain a list of youth organizations? Please be concise. We've already given a reply. In fact, the lists are open to the public. This is open information. Ms. Wong has already seen the information. Mr. Michael Tian?
Chairman, I need to declare that I am a member of a task force under the Commission on Poverty alleviation. Now, many are of the view that the C C F can help the government identify projects and measures which should come under the regular government program. But then, if the government doesn't have the funding, then the projects will have to remain standing items under the C C F. Can the administration promise? Can the administration promise that with regard to the standing items or projects under the CCF, they will sooner or later be covered by the government's recurrent funding?
I'm asking this because this is a concern of many outsiders. If for a long period of time, the CCF is to support standing projects, that is, there's no termination time, say, in two to three years' time, then it's better for the CCF not to make use of its capital. It should only use its interest. But now some outsiders say that the capital can also be used. Now, if the capital can also be used, it will be very dangerous. In future, you don't know whether you'll be able to inject further funds into CCF. So if you don't have sufficient funds in future, the CCF may suffer a sudden death. Well, Mr. Michael Tian, please do not use cocktail language. That is, please do not use both English and Chinese in your remarks. Don't use sudden death, for example. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, what is sudden death in Chinese? Well, I don't know. If you ask me, I'm not a translator. But if you're asking me, I'll say tāi yīn sēi mōng, sudden death. Anyway, I hope that our colleagues will not use cocktail language. Otherwise, it's very difficult for interpreters to interpret. Bureau?
Well, this is a very important policy question. Mr. Chairman? The member's question involves the financial commitment on the part of the government. Well, let me be brief. The CCF will not support standing projects. If a standing project has undergone experiment and should become a standing project, then it should strive for resources from the relevant departments. Well, but your concern is correct. There are so many CCF projects. Up to this moment, we see that the CCF has recommended three projects to become standing projects. Well, very often, we mention point number three. That is, recurrent expenditure is subject to restrictions. And for projects that cannot become recurrent projects, then the CCF will play its role by supporting the project as a non recurrent project, such that the beneficiaries will not suffer. Now, one plus one equals two. Well, if I add up all those official remarks, the CCF means that if a project should become current, then sooner or later, the government will take over that project. It's a matter of time. That is, sooner or later, the government will take over. Yes, that's correct. Well, two colleagues would ask a second round question. Anymore? Please press your request to speak button. I've pressed it. And just now, a colleague at the back also pressed the button. Anymore? Three minutes each, all right? I'll be very strict. Both questions and answers. I don't want anymore on the list, all right? Mr. Ip Pot Him?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to follow up on reply thirty-three. A question asked by me is related to mainland study tours. I can see from the government's reply that in terms of understanding traditional Chinese culture, there's provision for such study tours. Are there any other study tours to allow the young people of Hong Kong to understand more our country and the mainland? And just now, I heard from some colleagues that civic education cannot be separated from national education. In your reply, you mentioned that under the Youth Council, there'll be twenty-six million dollars in the twenty thirteen, fourteen project. Now, what about the content of the exchanges, the exchange programs? Is it to allow our young people to have positive as well as negative understanding of the mainland? Such that participating young people will understand the overall situation of our country in a three-dimensional manner? Secretary?
Well, the member's question focuses on exchanges on Chinese culture. Therefore, in our reply, we specifically mention a cooperative project with Guangdong Province. Every week, there'll be study tours to Guangzhou and Macau to look at cultural facilities and heritage, cultural heritage. Macau will also come to Hong Kong to look at our culture. Well, the specific reply to Mr. Ip's question does touch upon culture. As regards the twenty-six million dollars of expenditure for study tours to the mainland, we receive applications from organizations and schools. Schools have organized study tours of this sort. They will visit the mainland to see all sorts of things. And then when they come back, we'll see what reports they submit to us. If they spend public money well, we won't restrict them to certain aspects. That is, we won't prohibit them from seeing anything. Dr. Helena Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on reply eighty-six. That is, study tours for young people. Now, how are we to gauge the effectiveness of such study tours? You say that you rely on the feedback of the participants. Now, what aspects of feedback are you talking about? Food, itinerary, or political stance or position? Will you ask them after you've come back? Will you love your country more? Will you be more proud as a Chinese? Do you love your country? Would you support the Communist Party? So I know, I would like to know what sort of feedback would you like to receive from them? And then I'd like to ask about reply seventy-five. A question by Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. Now, if you look at art, one point zero seven million dollars on art. Oh, sorry, this is about a hundred million dollars. Sports, two hundred and fifty million dollars. Apparently, there's no balance. If you ask me whether art is more important or sports is more important, I say, I would say both are as important. But it seems that you think sports are more important. Deputy Secretary or Under Secretary? Permanent Secretary? Well, we have forms for the groups to fill up. If you're interested, I can let you have the forms. Well, basically, we ask the participants their feelings. That is, after joining the study tour, has his knowledge been deepened? Does he have any opinion on any aspect? Does he have any views on anything? We absolutely not ask them questions about politics. Of course, if they're ready to tell us, we'll listen. But then we won't ask them whether or not you love your country. We absolutely won't ask that sort of questions. Well, sports and music? Or sports and art? Well, we have a sports development fund. And that is a head of expenditure under that fund. Well, there's a funding difference, but that's not deliberate. That is, we do not deliberately give more to sports and less to art. In the LCSD, there's a great deal of funding for arts. Mr. Kenneth Chan?
I'd like to ask about reply twenty-three about study tours and exchange routes. Well, this time is not about the mainland, but international study tours. In the reply, Ireland, UK, Singapore, and Japan were the only jurisdictions visited. At the panel level, I've repeatedly said that we would like to have more room for development in this regard, such that our children can broaden their horizon and learn more. But in the past few years, the number of jurisdictions has decreased from four to three. Now, when you design these study tours, what are the criteria? Is there any room to provide more jurisdictions for young people's choices so that they can learn more? Well, I agree that we can have more destinations for the exchange program. However, sometimes things are not in our control. For example, all along, we've had an exchange program with the UK. But last year, we heard that at the recipient's side, they had some financial difficulties. So UK was dropped last year. And now we are identifying other jurisdictions for our young people. I mean, other than UK. Mr. Chairman, this is not a language problem. Even for EU, they have twenty-seven members and will increase to twenty-eight. So we can have exchanges with them. So can we do more? Verbally, we say we want to have more exchange programs. I'd like to know if some Hong Kong universities would like to have more contact with European countries. Can we have partnership programs or exchange programs with them through the private sector, universities, and other stakeholders to promote international exchange programs? Well, I understand that many institutions have such exchange programs, including the universities. But this program is totally unrelated to those run by universities. Well, as the Permanent Secretary said, we would like to have more destinations. Well, traditionally, we have identified our former sovereign state, the UK, Ireland, and Singapore. But can you consider more? Yes. Now, this session is concluded. Tomorrow, we'll start at nine thirty AM.